I call the University Heights City Council meeting to order, April 11th, 2017. Four council are present and-
Louise, you are to the side of your microphone again.
And Councilman Jerry Zimmerman will not be here tonight. Minutes have been circulated for March 14th. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. The next order of business is public hearing. I open the public hearing. The public hearing on proposal of Mid-American Energy Company to renew non-exclusive electric and natural gas supply operations and maintenance franchises. If anybody would like to speak, come up to the podium here and state your name and address. Okay, I close the public hearing and return to the regular meeting. Okay, Steve Ballard circulated some information, and so I'm going to go to you, Steve.
Sure, thank you. So, the, um, the, there's an or- two ordinances that are going to be before the council, going to be before the council. We had them on the agenda tonight. We're still in some discussions and negotiations with Mid-American Energy on a couple of final points, so didn't impede the council from having the public hearing tonight, so that's gone ahead, but we're not in a place to have ordinances for an electrical or electricity franchise and a natural gas franchise. We're real close, so I've been working with Councilmember Kazada and Mark Reiners, who's here from tonight from Mid-American Energy, and Josiah Bills kemper, and I'm sure we're going to have something by the May meeting. The existing franchise doesn't expire until later, so the city's protected, Mid-American's protected, and we'll just, I would request that you defer any action on ordinances 203 and 204 until the May meeting.
Are there any questions for-
When, when does the-
It expires-
The current one expire?
I think it actually expires May 31. Now, that doesn't have anything to do with, like, interrupting service.
No, I understand that. So, we'll have to collapse the vote next time, which I don't think will be a problem either, but-
I don't think so either.
Yeah.
I made it, I didn't think it would be council's prerogative to operate without contracts.
Yeah, no.
It makes sense to wait until next, uh, until the next meeting.
Okay, fine.
Any other questions? I see the Mid-American representative is here, Mark. Would you, do you have anything to say?
I was really going to, but I was just here to answer any questions.
Okay. He didn't go to the microphone, but he said he's here to answer any questions that anybody might have. So, thank you. We're just going to defer to May. So, the next order of business is public input. Would anyone from the public like to speak to the council? Virginia?
Virginia Miller, 7 Glencrest Drive. I'm here tonight to invite everybody to come back here next week on Monday, April 17th, for a presentation on urban trees in University Heights at 7:00 PM. We'll be going over what is urban forestry, why it's important, an update on the Emerald Ash Bore, and what the city will be doing, and options for replanting for people who lose their ash trees.
Thank you, Virginia. I hope lots of people come. It sounds like an interesting evening. Would anyone else like to speak? Hi. Yeah, just come up to the microphone. Thank you.
I never have to use the microphone.
Well-
The microphone's kind of a, an odd feature to have to tell. Oh, yeah. Oh, you don't really, I can lean down. It's like two seconds of talking, that's fine.
Hi.
And I'm plenty loud, I'm pretty sure. So, I just, um, and I sent a email-
Name it. No, we need your name.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Christian Honstead, 526 Mahaska Court. And I just wanted to address the council about, which sounds silly after some of the, but chickens. There was, in general, I think some of the things that I'd heard that people, or council members had heard, that people were not that interested in having them, and so I just wanted to voice my opinion on rec- put it on record that my family and, I think my neighbor was going to send a note as well, but we were interested in having urban chickens, mostly for the idea that we like to know where our food comes from. I don't really see chickens as any more of a nuisance or an issue than a dog, for the most part, you know? It's like having an outdoor dog. You have a pen, make sure feeding water. I think I wrote a note to the council and did mention, reading through some of the Iowa City things, I think if you have a fee, I think it's important that you have a direction for that fee, so that there be, you know, not that you're just collecting it, but that it's either put towards a specific purpose, that, you know, whether there's more green spaces, or whether it's an educational thing on chickens, so that people can understand a little bit more about them. If it's bringing in someone, so then, you know, I'm by far no expert, and if you ask my wife who had chickens and grew up on a farm, she would laugh at me about the whole chicken idea. She thinks it's silly that I want to do any of those things, because I didn't have that opportunity. But that's really our biggest reason. You know, from a neighbor's standpoint, I'm fortunate to have two really good neighbors on each side. I think it's important that you have a conversation with your neighbors about it, but, you know, when my neighbors got two dogs, I didn't have to get their permission, they didn't have to get my permission, and vice versa, so, you know, that seems like an issue that maybe we could, you just ask that you have a conversation. I don't think you necessarily have to get, you know, everything the right. The other thing I think that was brought up, and I talked to a couple of other, a couple of you guys about it, was the butchering thing, and Mike was kind enough to explain kind of his opinion on that, in that really what they didn't want was that you were bringing in fryers, so you're bringing them in for the purpose of butchering and consume, consumption, and so the idea of having chickens, we really just want them for the eggs. I did explain that I think, you know, if I have an issue when you get chickens, you don't know what they are until they're bigger. So, there needs to be something put in there if you're going to do that, where I'm allowed to then eliminate the one that is a rooster, so that-
I didn't know that.
And dragging them, loading them live in my car doesn't really make much sense, and eliminating a chicken is a pretty simple process. I do a lot of hunting, a lot of those things, so if you're going to put something in ordinance about it, I think, you know, that you're discreet about it. We clean a lot of pheasants, a lot of ducks, some geese, and my neighbors would never know that any of those animals were ever consumed at my house, so I don't really see a difference with chickens, but that's in general. Just wanted to put that on record, I guess.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the council? Okay, we'll go on to One University Place Construction Reports and Updates. I asked Jeff Maxwell to attend the meeting tonight. Thanks for coming, Jeff.
Thanks for inviting me. Jeff Maxwell, Maxwell Development. Okay.
Just keep talking, we're good.
Progress on our building. McComas Sessina is informing us that they believe that they're going to be starting to escalate our schedule a little bit. We're looking at more of final occupancy now, shooting closer to Thanksgiving, as opposed to the end of the year, so that's an optimistic thought that we're all trying to be working on. As you know, McComas Sessina has done, we believe, a very, very good job for the development team and as well for the community as very best as they possibly can, so we're real pleased about that. Our marketing activity levels in the last two weeks have really escalated tremendously. We've had some adjustment in pricing that's had to be done, as we were testing the market to see where we were at from our marketing standpoint, and those adjustments have been made, and it's made a significant difference in our activity level. Sales and occupancies are coming up. I think we're approaching 10 or 11 units now in the front building, so we're, we're almost at the 50% level.
Those are sold?
From a commitment, a combination of sold and rentals.
Oh, and rentals?
Yes.
Do I say that number?
I don't know exactly the number.
Okay.
The number in the back building, there's another sold unit finalized this morning again in the rear building, so that's, I think, three of them in the last week in the rear building, so we're just real excited with that level of activity starting to pick up again. There is a meeting, Steve, that I need to ask. Justin Doyle will be in town this next meet, this next Monday. Jim Lane has been attempting to try to get a meeting with Justin to finalize some of the public improvement values and the special assessment. Justin's committed to being here from early morning. We've got several other meetings scheduled, but if you could give that some thought, perhaps-
I talked to Kevin today.
Okay.
I talked to Kevin today, and, and we're going to email Justin the information.
Okay.
Steve and I talked about that. He'll do that, and we'll get with, figure out a time for Justin. We're both pretty avail- Steve and I are both pretty available on Monday.
I think Monday will be a day that he plans on spending most all of the day here, and he's coming down early in the morning, so we've got some other meetings scheduled as well, so hopefully we can get on that and finalize that. Josiah has also shared with me on the public improvements, there's still a couple of outstanding items, mostly traffic control related. The push buttons for the passenger, or for the pedestrian walkways were shipped incorrectly, and those need to be changed out, and for whatever reason, it's just taking an awful long time to get that done. There's some mighty minor grouting at the base of the, the traffic signals that have to be finalized, and that's done with non-freezing weather, so that'll be finalized, but Josiah just shared with me, he'll be sending out a final punch list item tomorrow, and we'll put every bit of effort into trying to get those two or three items completed just as soon as we can. Any questions from anyone? We've just got an email from Judy Joyce about maintenance of the East Ravine and the West Ravine, actually, to monitor that. Judy is under contract to do the evaluations of the ravines. I think Quality Care will actually do any of the required work that's needed or prescribed by Judy Joyce, and they've agreed that they'll also take care of those issues as they're directed from her. So, a meeting this next week is being planned to get everyone on site and do their first spring tour and spring visit, I believe.
Commercial?
Commercial spaces, uh, the, the Maggie's Pizza framing work is underway. You see the activity level going on in there. Jerry Zimmerman is handling that contracting work, and McComas Sessina, I have not got a recent update on that, but I see the activity level has started in there. There are several other, uh, action items. The space that's adjacent to this community center is now spoken for. The exercise center that's going to be serving the community of One University Place will be a private. We've attempted and attempted to try to get a public exercise clinic in here, and we're having difficulty getting that secured. So, as of right now, the front space, the front half of the adjoining space next to us is, is committed. We're not allowed to disclose who that is yet, but the community of One University Place will be incorporating this space on the north half of the building, will be the, the exercise space for the residents of both buildings. There's activity space on the salon activity that's, that has several different interested parties. The location for that is on the far west end of the building, and if that space were to be committed, we would be down to two 2,500 square foot spaces, so we're at about two-thirds completed now on our commercial space.
Do city staff count as residents for the gym?
Absolutely, they should. They're part of the association with the same honors, including the mayor.
There you go. Thank you.
I don't think so.
And Jerry's not here, so we ought to, we ought to put him at the top of the list all the time. Yeah, those, those details, I mean, the spaces available for the, for the One University Place community. There, there are some other options that we're trying to consider there, but it's just not finalized yet, but that's a really important amenity that we were hoping for the entire community, but we're getting some resistance from, from some of the commercial users. They're very concerned about traffic on Melrose at peak hours in the morning and in the evening, and we've not been able to calm that for some reason.
What are they defining as peak hours?
Early, early morning traffic, heavy flows in and out of the hospital.
Like 6:00 AM and-
Well, 6:00 AM isn't quite so much of a problem, but you get closer to 6:30, 6:45, I'm sensing that's, that's the timeframe that they've shared with us, and then again in the evening. What, what seems to be perfect timing, on one hand, they're claiming is not, and there's-
What's that? Can you tell us what timeframe they're calling not good timing?
That, that 6:30 to 7:15, 7:30 time in the morning to be able to have, not in-house residents, but the community, to be able to be open to the general public. They're fearful of the amount of traffic. I've shared with them the fact that the intersection now performs better and more efficiently than it did prior to the improvements, but that's not, that's not convinced them of that yet.
And how about the PM? So, we know 6:45 to 7:15 is their, is a point of tension. What about the evening hours? What are the-
I think their evening hours, the mass exodus coming out of the hospital, 3:45 to 4:30, 5 o'clock is, is their peak concern, the after-work hours. And again, our hopes were to have a full 24-hour service that would be available to the whole community, and we've not given up completely. We've been exploring this other idea, and the space would only amount to half of this square footage that's over here right now, since the, the front half is already sold.
Any other questions? Oh, yes, Anne.
I'd like to know what the current occupancy is of the, of the units-
I think there's only one resident in the building as of right now. Yeah, I think there's one, I don't know her name, lady that works at the hospital.
I wanted to thank you, Jeff. You know, last month, you came and gave a report, and you asked me, I asked you, who can I contact with things to take care of, and I want to thank you. I have emailed you maybe six times, and you responded immediately, and I really appreciate that, and hooked me up with the right person, and things are getting done, and I really appreciate it, and I want the public to know how responsive you've been, and, and-
Appreciate that.
You know, that's been good.
It's part of argument to the neighbor as well.
I want you to stay there, if you could, because I want to go to a discussion of the draft rental policy of community center, Mike, under Mike Havercamps, and the reason I want you to come, I mean, stay there, is because I spoke with Jerry Zimmerman on Saturday morning, and he told me he couldn't be at this meeting, and he sent an email to all of the council and said, you know, we, I want to speak and talk about things to do with the association and declarations of the condominiums and make sure they're followed. And after I read it, I called him and said, if I have Jeff Maxwell or Kevin Munson or a representative there, I think that would be a good thing to, so the council could review the agreement and see if it follows with the condominium declarations, and that, and then I also attached it, and Mike circulated it to the council, and I guess Mike has it on the big screen. That's so nice to have that big screen. And anyway, you know, Councilman Zimmerman had, was really concerned about parking, and when we went, when we sat down at this work session, the council did a maximum of 50 attendees, and have you had time to review it a little bit? And I know the council wants to be very supportive of other residential and commercial neighbors and be good neighbors, and I wondered if you wanted to comment on how it's worded with the parking, if you see a problem with it?
I think, I think the community use of the community center is exactly what its intended use was. It's one of the intended uses. We expect to be and hope to be fully neighborly, if you will. I think that's the term that you used earlier. I do think it's a little bit of uncharted waters, where we all need to approach with, with a real critical eye to, to be sympathetic to the residential customers in the building, or residents, to be sensitive to the other commercial users in the building. I, I think it's important that everybody do realize that there's, there's still the other half of the drive lane yet to be added, and will be a full line of additional parking all the way along the front of the, the north side of the parking lot, which was all discussed as need be, and I think Jerry's concern, or any commercial users, he's not the only one that's commented, as we have talked with numerous different potential, there is a question about the amount of parking space for certain users. And I think it's really important that as we move forward, we all have a very discerning eye, watching and observing, being respectful to the neighbors, but yet we have to realize the University Heights community is also one of our tenants. They're one of our family members. They're one of the, One University Place team, and they have the equal rights as anyone else. So, as far as being able to get along with each other, there's bound to be a time when, when the restaurant activity is at their peak hours, what I can kind of assume would be from 5:30 till 8:30, most evenings, I would guess would be the, the heaviest of the peak hours, that there'll be, that there'll be concern, and obviously most, a lot of usage during that time. The restaurant will be open the same evening that we have council meetings, and there's 25 or so with council here tonight and automobile spaces. I think alluding to off-site parking is, is an important thing to consider that might have to happen, but I really don't think the reality of that needing to happen will be. I think our residents for the north building, any visitor parking, will always have some spaces along the north side of the building, but there won't be anyone in that building allowed to keep a second vehicle out in the parking lot all the time. That's not the intention. So, it's, it's that monitoring and learning and getting to know everyone's needs. There, there will be a point in time when the parking lot's really full, and I think that's excellent. I think that's what we're striving for, but, but to be able to do that, I think there's people in this room that will attend these meetings, that one day will be able to see customers of next door, and other commercial users in the building. We really don't think it's going to be a very popular problem, a very frequent problem.
Do you think 50 is a good number for maximum of-
I think 50 people in this room, depending on the type of event. You know, when we first started talking about community center users, I was thinking, you know, some of the many area chapters of different organizations that you always attend somewhere in our surrounding communities. I would like to think that this space will now be available and probably be offered for various different group meetings. We talked about the Girl Scouts, we talked about the Boy Scouts, we talked about your planning meetings that involve the, the garden club. If, if the ladies and gentlemen that are involved in the garden club choose to meet at a, a restaurant, or at someone's home or kitchen, I would think that would be a perfectly acceptable use for this space. The, the farmer's market, to be able to have planning meetings and preparation for farmer's market, to be able to be able to keep things in this, in this space ready for the farmer's market, and to be able to plan traffic controls. I hope we have to close the street off, and I, I mean, that's what we all envisioned, and I believe that's where we're headed, and looking forward to that, I believe.
Okay, does council have some questions?
I do have some comments that I couldn't agree with you anymore, Jeff, with respect to the appropriate use of residents having a say in use over this public space. It is no secret that the public supported this community center, and I think anyone who makes any restrictions is misguided and under-informed as to what the public, our residents particularly wanted to envision for this space. At this time, Madam Mayor, I'd like to request, because it's extremely important that it, that we have a thorough understanding of how counselors are thinking and designing policy in our community, and how that impacts us, that we can please read Jerry Zimmerman's email from April 7th, 2017, that was sent to council at 9:59 PM regarding the usage situation that he, that he sees. I'd like that read into the record at this time.
Rather than reading the whole thing, we'll attach it to the agenda, but I can pull it up here. Just like, here. Yeah.
That's right, and that's why I thought the clerk would be well-suited to read this for us as a neutral party.
There you go, Chris. Can you see that?
I can't see that.
Here.
Oh.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Thank you.
I hope I did.
Yeah, this is easy to read. You know, while, while we're getting that ready to be read, Glenn Seider's just mentioned to me, and I had thought of this earlier, that it is pretty important, I think, that we get the fire marshal involved and the signage posted as far as the maximum occupancy of this room.
Maximum occupancy for this room has been provided by the building inspector at 148.
148?
148 people, so it was-
We'll certainly get to know each other. I, I, I find that really hard to believe.
It's actually 141, but, yeah.
That's what we were told.
Really?
Yep. Last meeting.
And nobody actually- Nadi and I don't agree with that.
No.
I can tell by, that surprises me, but I guess I'm not used to having that sign. I've oftentimes been in a, in a restaurant or in a public space where I'd read that sign on the wall, and I do the math, and I'm a little bit surprised at how high those numbers sometimes are, so I'm a little bit confused around it.
Okay, Chris is going to read Councilman Zimmerman's email.
All, excuse me, all, I will be unable to take part in the council meeting this coming week. I am sorry, but I have no choice. As you all know, I am very concerned, as a business owner, about the parking required for as many as 50 guests at the community center. This is likely to put pressure on businesses whose livelihood and vitality depend on sufficient parking. This pressure is what motivated the condominium declaration that does not allow for profit events except for catering by the businesses. Please also know that presently, there is a potential business owner looking at one of the spaces who will not purchase a space unless and until the parking issue is resolved with the city. Certainly, it is self-serving, representing the potential business owners, but I would hope that the use of the city space would not be restricted to not-for-profit organizations and small meetings of residents at University Heights. I think this view is consistent with the condominium declarations that may not permit the event center now contemplated by the city. I am sorry I will not be there for the discussion, and I would hope that the vote would be put off until I can be there, even though I will, will abstain. Thank you for your consideration, Jerry.
Thank you, Chris. Now, did you want to comment more? No. Did you want to comment, apparently?
I think so. I'd like to just expand. I did have a conversation with Louise earlier today in, in preparation, making sure that we were going to be here, and we had proper time to review the, the-
Agreement.
Agreement, as it's, as it's being contemplated. And I was a little bit taken when Louise was pointing out the fact that the city would, would consider using it for, for a fee as a for-profit activity. I guess I, I just never thought that that would even be a consideration, and not, not that it can't be, but I'm kind of marrying what, what Jerry is concerned. He's concerned that if this space were to be utilized and rented for a short duration period of time for a fee, and even though the, the rental dollars would flow into the community, that, that surprised me, and maybe that's not your intention, but it seems that that would be an inappropriate use of what, what I thought this building was created for. If it were to be used for any nonprofit, any community-oriented, if there was a, a residential family, I remember we discussed possibly having larger family gatherings where Mike's family just won't fit in his home, and this space was available, and he could rent it for a fee that was predictable.
Jeff, quick interruption. Did Louise, or Jerry, or anybody else- Jeff, a quick interruption. Did Louise, or Jerry, or anybody else loop you in with respect to some of the constitutional issues that are at play here with respect to limiting the use of the city to only certain segments of people? There is a memorandum that I think, um, it was part of the public council packet at the last meeting that articulates very well constitutional federal issues for freedom of, of religious practice, freedom of speech, freedom of association that the city faces. If we restrict too much with, um, without being.
I've not had that conversation. Just in Louise and my conversation this morning, uh, she had mentioned that.
I was trying to tell, tell him what Jerry's concerns were.
And, and again, I think Jerry could probably say it better than anyone. His, his request to maybe defer this, that's certainly council's business. But it, it just surprised me if, if there was a for-hire, for-profit motive. I, I would think the community center interest would be, what do I know? I, I didn't write the law. So as a neighbor, as a, as a resident, I would just think that was seemingly would surprise me. I've been surprised many times before. I, I was thinking more community-centered, for family gatherings, for, for anything nonprofit that's good for our community, good for our, our, our residents, to be able to participate locally. But, but to do it for an actual profit, I understand the fee structure that you're demonstrating. It seems to be very fair.
Is, is that what you're concerned about, is the basic fee structure of $30 for two hours?
Well, that, I can't imagine what a two-hour usage would be, but I, again, I haven't attempted to do that.
Well, you can't do it for free. I mean, we do have to pay staff to, you know, do keys. We do have to pay for back-office operations, a, a number of things. I mean, we're, we're losing, as a matter of a business model, there's no money to be made here with the fees that we're charging. So I don't see it as a commercial use issue. It's more of.
It's not a, not a profit for the community center. But if, if I were to, uh, want to hold a, a class, I was a professor, and I needed a space, and I was going to have a, a, an hour class, and, and we're going to meet once every week for an hour and a half or two hours, work it into the timeframe. And, and that, he was charging a fee for people to come here. That just seems kind of awkward to me.
Well, that's exactly what council did not agree to do at the last, at the, at the working session. Council did not agree to lease out to individuals or businesses blocks of, of permanent space here. It's, it's all by invitation by the city as a guest, and if there's any compensation associated with that, well, the city needs to make arrangements for that, but that's certainly not a leasing arrangement, like a tenant. We're not taking on any tenants. Jim and Mike and Dottie, please correct me if that was a misunderstanding. I don't think there was any discussion or any inclination that we were taking on tenants for this, for this space. Are you taking on tenants, Jim?
Not that I'm aware of.
Pop Mike, then you refresh my memory?
That word was not used.
Okay.
But I don't, I do think, and Jeff's, we, we did not discuss the for-profit very well. We talked about it some, and, um, we did not disavow doing that, and I think we need to perhaps.
What do you mean by for-profit? Can you explain a little bit, give a example?
Yoga class, other classes we've talked about. Jeff talked about a professor who would give a seminar. I mean, there's people in the financial advising business who put on seminars and all of this kind of stuff also. I'd never go to them, but anyway.
Now, not even for the dinner?
No.
Ann wanted to, can you come up?
Main poisoning.
Just come up to the microphone, Ann. Ann wanted to add something.
I was gonna say, uh, what if I want to host a Tupperware party?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there, there's a huge spectrum.
Yeah, I, and, 'cause what I'm kind of thinking about is these for-profit things only be for residents and community of, of the university, of University Heights. And maybe at that point, we limit it to 25 people if it's going to be a for-profit type of thing. So I'm just trying to throw out some ideas around, you know, some kind of limitation on the for-profit piece. Now, I don't know what, now, going back to what you said, I don't know what all Steve is comfortable with either, so.
Well, all I'll tell you is that the seminars for Urban Chickens would be for a fee of $5 for the certificate.
Yeah.
Scrambled eggs afterwards.
Scrambled eggs, right.
But I, I, I think in terms of a lot of that, I, I think we had talked about the idea of, of, I think a Tupperware party is, oh my God, we're getting into such minutia, but anyway. A Tupperware party is very different than a yoga class, in the sense that the yoga class, you charge people to come to the class. And, and the idea that we would put together some kind of a recreation commission that would sponsor things like that, so that it isn't just any person making a profit.
That's right.
Um, I think a Tupperware party is very different in the sense that you don't charge, I don't think, the people to come. And I mean, to me, that would be a legitimate, normal use by a resident.
Have you been to a Tupperware party? Have you been to a Tupperware party? I'm just checking.
All I remember.
Because.
I do remember.
I don't think you know how they work exactly, and, uh, the person who puts on the Tupperware party does benefit from, from it financially.
But I don't see that in quite.
Will you come up too?
Well, are we going to go after toddlers and birthdays? I mean, toddlers benefit from, from their birthday parties here.
But you know, let me just present another scenario. This has opened up a whole can of worms, frankly. I teach genealogy, and I teach classes. At the moment, I'm doing it at Hills Bank, and they pay me for the classes. But the possibility is out there that maybe I want to teach a class. It's always a two-session fit. Does that mean, because it's not on a semester basis, it's two classes, would I not be allowed to do that? And I have no intention of doing that. I'm just throwing that out as, as an example of how this could be used. Yeah, I benefit from that. So this is a whole can of worms here, you guys.
Well, right, now, my understanding is, right now, as it's written, we're not talking about profit, for-profit.
No.
At this time, but it was a concern of Jerry's and a concern of.
Jerry was present at the same meeting we were all present. He stayed through for two and a half hours discussing ad nauseam this agreement. I'm, I'm not sure where the confusion is, other than the parking space that he is, he is trying to balance out against his business interest, which I totally understand. But I, I think that's a separate issue, and I think we're just going down a detail that is, is not intended and not reflected in the language unless legal would like to speak to that at this time.
And I didn't mean to open up a, a topic. It was just a, a three-minute conversation with Louise this morning, and I, I just, with this being the topic, I thought I'd share that.
No.
Well, item nine says, sale of goods. No items or services may be sold unless it is a city-sponsored event.
That's right.
So I would think the Tupperware or the genealogy courses, those things would not be allowed at this point.
I don't know. Case-by-case basis, right?
Right. Okay, um, so, uh, the council, do you want to defer this, or do you want to make a decision? Or what's the wishes of the council?
Well, I, while I respect Jerry's concerns, I also would like to begin working on this in actuality, so we can see if there's any issues that we need to address. And so I'm, I'm, and I would like to move forward on it, because I think we need to, you know, see who wants to rent, who wants to use it, see what kinds of parking. We're not going to have much parking issues right now. I mean, Jerry said May 1st on opening this, and that's.
And now it's June 15th.
Now it's June 15th, and we're still, you know, we'll see. I'll comment on that, so anyway.
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, but I mean, we've got a couple months here where we could get some, get some use from a standpoint of history and get some data to see if we need to tweak this, tweak this thing in some way.
And we can clean it up after, after the fact.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not, you know, so I, I don't see a need to wait. I'd like to get started so we start making our mistakes and.
Or our successes.
And our, yeah, and our successes, and making.